I will be very, very fundamental today. Let us just start off. Understanding the meaning, aim and scope of our research. We will also try to understand what does this kind of what is called variables mean in research? And how should we formulate the hypothesis, research hypothesis? And how should we make a problem statement, you know, if time permits, I will be talking. I will be going very slowly in the beginning. But later on we catch up because some frequency has to get balanced. I wish all of you listen to it. It is not that for the first time you are listening to all these fundamental concepts. It is, I am sure you would have known these things, but then methodology is a systematized way of learning things. You know, we should know and use these steps in research very, very discreetly and also explicitly. Many people generally will have some confusion of the very meaning and definition of research. The very, you know, many people do not know how to, you know, scientifically formulate a hypothesis. A research question and then a problem statement. Let us try to understand in the right perspective, these steps in the beginning. And then try to, you know, catch up with little higher details like how to write. Uh, yeah, how to do actually, what is the technique of reviewing of literature? Which is the real, real uh crux and many people think even today. You know, just reading the articles, reading the information, gathering the information is review of literature. But you will understand that it is little totally kind of little different path. And we will try to understand all those things. I would like you to, you know, uh run, I mean, I will run through the slides that I have made for this purpose. I wish that you will note down two things. One, what is not present in the slides? Which I am going to explain in detail. And number two, you will have to make your own notes along with the slides I share with you. For the purposes of, you know, internal and external semester examinations. Please understand research methodology is a basic fundamental way of doing research. Which when you learn and become accustomed and acclimatized. I am sure that you will end up with lot of what is called research deliverables. You will try to understand what is, what should be the ingredients of each of these steps. I will be talking about these steps little later. But in the beginning, let me just give you one or two instructions. First instruction is that you should note down those points which. I am not going to, you know, display in the slides but going to explain very elaborately. Second, I would like you to make some questions and keep it with you. Every session, for example, every hour, you should make some five questions. It is extremely important and you should submit those questions before I take to come up in the next session. I would like to go through those questions. So, two things you will have to do. One, make a very shortcut notes on those points which I am not going to show as slide. Second, you will have to compulsorily make five questions in whatever that we discuss, whatever they discuss. It could be very trivial or it could be very complex. Let us just try to understand by questioning. You know, uh big things become easier for me to understand what you do not know. If you tell me very clearly and honestly, what you do not know, then possibly solutions can be easily found. If I know the solution right away, I will be able to tell you. If I do not know, I will just definitely consult and come back and we will discuss that particular thing till we get satisfaction. So, these two things are very important. All the research scholars hereby requested to make notes. If you want to vet that notes, you can send it to me. I can vet it and send it back to you. And the next one is asking questions. Please understand, let me just start sharing some. Notes. I am not sure what is happening. Hello, Dr. Anupama.
Yes, sir.
I am having some difficulty in sharing.
Okay, uh how can I help you, sir?
No, it is, it is opening multiple screens if I, you know, if I open it up.
Okay.
The screens are coming up. It is that upper arrow mark, is it not?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you argue about, I am opening the slide and minimizing.
Sir, uh one suggestion is, uh if you may kindly, before sharing, sir, if you can kindly open the P P T and keep it. Uh wherever it is, let it just open and keep it then, sir, if you can just then open the Google Meet this screen. Then try sharing with the up arrow after clicking the up arrow option.
Pero, that is your entire screen, is it not?
Uh, no. Once you do that, there will be three options, sir. Your entire screen, a window or tab.
Yeah, my entire screen has come.
No, you can choose a tab option or the window option, yeah.
Just close it.
Window option, sir, you just, huh, then you will see the opened P P T there somewhere.
Open the P P T here, right?
Then if you can click that and click on share.
So, I am not seeing the desktop option here.
Desktop will not be there. Try the tabs, sir, uh tab, it is a tab or the. Because on the up arrow option, there are three choices, your entire.
I have used the tab option. And what is showing is meet PhD coursework sessions.
Okay, I think you need to use the option of a window.
Okay, then I will have to cancel this.
But in the meantime, before that, the P P T, sir, kindly keep it open, sir.
Uh, P P T is open only.
Yes, sir.
Should I minimize it?
No, 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 sir. Don't minimize that, sir.
Now I have to use window, no?
Yes, sir, a window, that middle one.
Now I should click on to that.
That one which is open, sir. Kindly choose that and then say share.
Are you able to see it now?
Yes, sir, let me, it is starting. Presentation. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it has come, sir.
Okay, very good.
You may want to kindly increase the, you know, the resolution, that percentage on the bottom right.
Bottom right, there is nothing here.
Sixteen percent or something, I think it is showing, it's very faint that. It might be increased to at least fifty, sixty percent and then put it on slideshow, sir. That would be better.
Moment, I have to stop sharing again and go back.
No, 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 sir, no, sir, no, sir, don't stop sharing, sir.
I am not seeing any button, any, any button I am not seeing. Only full screen I am seeing this.
Okay, function F five, sir, would you be able to press that on the laptop?
Five, F five, yes. F five is not there.
Sir, then, sir, kindly go to the, can you see the top of your P P T, sir?
Yes.
Can you see that, huh, that one option, sir? Kindly check that if you can. Yes, sir, that, that one where the cursor is, yes, sir.
Has it come?
Uh, one second, sir, not yet. And it's not on the full screen mode yet. But I think you can start off, sir, it is visible, sir.
It is visible?
Yes, sir, it is visible. At least now something is visible.
Okay, but let me just go back once.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, are you able to see now?
Uh, yes, sir, but it's the title which has become more magnified, the entire.
Use it, reduce it.
Yes, a little bit, sir.
Now you please tell me.
Um, still, sir, a little bit more reduction required, sir, because the title is more visible. I think you have more content, ye- yes, till your name it is coming. From research methodology course to your name, I think there is certain, some more, yeah, yeah, this is fine, sir, I think so, yeah. Yes, sir, perfect, looks perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Say again, I am sorry, we will start from now, please, uh excuse me, he was little bit. Delayed. Research methodology course, I am not sure, Professor, you know, Anupama will give the course code little later on. We will follow that and today we will try and learn very, very basic. Now, what is the, what do we mean by research? Why research is needed? What is its importance and significance? And what is this business of research methodology is about? Let us try to understand very fundamentals. As I told you, it is not the first time, you would have definitely known about this, but let us just recapitulate. The spread of the topics, subtopics will be meaning, aim, objectives and definition of research. What is really? The entity are the point that motivates us to do research. That is indirectly, what is the significance of research? And what are these words like method and methodology? Many people do not know. There is a lot of difference. Let us understand that difference also. What is a method and methodology? And then research, in fact, the whole of today's one hour, we will talk on only these two words. The word research and the word methodology. Then we try to talk about something about very basic types, some six, seven types of research. Which generally we, you know, engage in or indulge in. And what are those, if we can put up some kind of concrete steps in research? A logical sequence that one has to get fo- follow so that he or she becomes a researcher. And on those steps are extremely important. In fact, these steps only we are going to decipher in an elaborate way later on. And how should we, you know, capture this research methodology into a called, into a flow diagram called research process? Please understand, one caveat here, one very important thing here is. Research is a lifeline of any academic activity, any academic activity. Many people think research is possible only for science and engineering. And research is not possible for some other disciplines like dance, music. Or for example, literature for that matter, research may not be, may not be applying. But it is entirely very, very incorrect to understand that research is a word. Research is a process, research is an activity, bunch of activities. That every faculty, every department, every person who is pursuing higher studies. Has to engage with. Nowadays, even school, school, school level, research is very, very important. And we will try to understand the exact meaning of this word, re and search. Let us talk about what is called, try to understand meaning and then define research. You know, definition is the finer details. Excuse me. The finer details and the assemblage of words. Which will give you a finer meaning, actually meaning, actual embedded latent, embedded and latent meaning of the research word.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, madam?
So, only the first slide is visible.
Yeah.
Can you please move to the third slide, sir?
First slide only I am talking. It is not moving, is it?
Not moving, sir.
Okay, then there is some problem, then.
Yes, sir, yes. Now it's in the third slide, sir.
Now it is moving?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, meaning of research. You see, this research is a little, uh, yeah, you know, added word for the verb search. And the word research means a noun. Search is verb and research is noun. It is very, very important. Now, in this research world, we have two words. One is prefix R E V and the other word is search. Now, it is easy for us to understand the word search. Search is, you know, something is lost, something is not in order. Something is misplaced, something is lacking, so we search for it. Right? See, the very word research means searching for something not present. Exactly. See, many people do not know, that means we are searching a piece of knowledge that is not visible. We are definitely engaged in what is called a creative activity. Or we are engaging in something which we are, we, we need, we try to find for the first time. That is exactly the embedded meaning of search. Searching is, it can happen superficially, it can happen little deeper. Now, it is extremely important for you to understand the meaning of the word or couplet of words like, for example. See and observe, S E, seeing is something that we see from our anatomical eyes that the God has given us. And we see, we perceive things, we try to understand. So, it is a sensor neural activity. In other words, we, if we close the eyes, we are not able to see. But if you open the eyes, you know, portal entry of some light and shadows and we are able to see. So, the anatomical function of the two eyes is seeing. But at the same time, we have another word called observing. Seeing and observing. Observing is the next graduation of seeing. Observing also includes seeing but little at a deeper level when we see with our mind. Mind is something which is embedded inside our body. And we recall or invoke that mind and put to the activity of seeing, then what we see is observing. In other words, mindful seeing is observing. Please understand, we do not under, we do not generally, you know, split up or analyze the situation like this. And when you analyze things, things become so clear and so nice. So, when we apply mind for the function like seeing, then it is no more seeing, but then it is observing. Now, why should we observe? Why we should be not just end up in only seeing? Yes, it's an important question. Seeing also gives some knowledge. But observing gives a deeper knowledge of what you want to see. That is extremely important. So, in other words, when we see, we see many things at a point in time. But when we observe, we see one picture at a time with little depth. That is, we are applying our mind to that particular scene. Why should we do that? We should do that pointed approach because we have to learn so many unseen things in that particular frame of one picture. The entire research centers round here. Otherwise, it is not research at all. It is just seeing and it is just being happy that everything is available. Let's say, we read the textbooks of five hundred thousand pages and be very happy with it. But we would not have observed anything. We would have learnt many things, but we would not have observed anything because all the pages that we see in a textbook, we don't put this. Mind to it. When we put the mind to it, then the entire book becomes ours. The entire observation becomes yours. So, this is a beautiful coinage of words. Search is do searching mindfully. Do the search very mindfully. That is the actual meaning. Attaching mind to our activity, then the verb becomes the noun. Search is verb. When we do research, you know, when we do, the word re here means searching repeatedly. Doing things repeatedly, many things we do repeatedly, is it not? Repeatedly, we, if we want to learn and if we want to make by heart, then we do kind of repeated work. In other words, by heart means by mind only. So, if we make that particular reading so intensely, so focusedly, so pointedly. Then what we observe becomes our own, you know, it adds on to our dictionary in the memory. And we can recall it whenever we want. In other words, searching for the details. So that details will never fail and they will rework and you will be able to see the entire picture. So, research is all about searching for details of a particular, particular topic or a particular issue. Or a particular concern or a particular item. So, you select that particular thing depending on your choice. And you start doing the activity, observing, researching. And that we do repeatedly so that, you know, it becomes our own persona. In the, in other words, it gets ingrained and we get soaked into that particular issue, problem, concern, item or research area. So, we need to understand the meaning in very correct perspective. Re means doing repeatedly, view, review. Search, research, doing things repeatedly. There is a meaning for it because in one seeing, in one activity at one time. We can collect some information, but if we see the same thing second time, we collect added information. And we see third time, we get added information like that. It goes on infinitely. And things are so complex, you know, you can go till sabatamek and even at the god's particle level, you can go on observing. So, there is no end for it. So, searching, there is absolutely no end for it. See, actually, research is always searching, I N G, gerand, in word, gerand means. Do the activity continually without stop. Anything walk means one time walk and walking means keep on walking. In, if you add I N G to a noun, then in grammar it becomes a gerand, it is a continuous present tense. Continuously doing that thing every time, moment. So, the word research has all this meaning embedded. It is searching intensely for a particular detail and details collection. Doing repeated work, I am mindfully doing the work and mindfully continually doing the work, continually doing the work. So that there is a continued feed of that particular, you know, observations or points of observation. That is just getting recorded in our brain. So, this is the entire meaning of the word research. Many people do not understand that it has such a depth of meaning, right? That is the reason why I took little time to explain what this word research. Research is an activity, researching is a pursuit or a profession that we do continually. And all of us today, what we have assembled, have ourselves selected to be researchers. So, our activity will be researching, then only we will be called researchers, right? So, we have to do anything and everything that comes across. Make, make a point or select a particular area or a frame and go on observably seeing it. So that you will go on collecting the information. That is in the overview or a kind of in-depth view of what is called the meaning of research. The two words make research a noun. Re means again and over again. You know, it is extremely important. In other words, a researcher is always a repeater, please understand. Repeater, he will always be seeing repeatedly but with a purpose of gathering information. As much as he or she can. That is the purpose. That is a sole purpose, collecting maximum information about a minimum thing. In fact, that is the actual definition of research. Knowing more and more and more, not really entirely, but more and more. On a less and less topic, less and less area, less and less issue, less and less concern. So, there is a concern and there is an information and the information about the concern, this information about the topic. You will be going on collecting and you, every time you collect, you get so much of a thrill. That it is something new you have found out for yourself and that adds on to the knowledge. And that's how the creation of new things happen, creation of knowledge happen and that's how knowledge repository, you know. You know, accumulates. In the world, all the textbooks are product of research only. All the theories are products of research only. For, in fact, I don't think there is any activity. Which is printed or which, which is explained is not under the scope of research. Unless you do research, you will not be able to gather the information. That is very, very certain. And here in, we are all assembled to understand, select a particular frame, particular issue, topic, concern. And try to collect maximal information. Please understand maximal information, not the entire information. Because one's lifetime is not enough to explore into even one or even a fraction of a particular topic. That is the reason, even after you finish your PhD, there will be something left out on the topic which you will distribute to your students. That is how the things goes on and on and on. Knowledge is infinite. So, you don't try to, you know, tell, you know, everything of it. You know only a bit of it, but very close bit and very authentic, competent and confident bit of the particular inquiry. You will be having yourself and that is itself enough for you because life, one's lifetime is not enough to entirely. You know, accumulate entire information or hundred percent information, right? So, that is a limitation and that is the very characteristic feature of research. Nobody can conquer the knowledge in an entire mode, all mode, full mode. So, over a period of time, when you become competent, when you become completely enlightened and gather enough information. On a particular topic, then will your supervisor or will your seniors will tell, yes, you have acquired something new. You have created something new, you have given. Created something new, you have given something new, now you are eligible for a particular standard or a particular graduation or a qualification. So you can take PhD, that is how things goes on, but the heart of the fact is that. We will be knowing more and more about a very pointed topic, very pointed concern, right? That is the actual fact. So, for that, we have to do it again and again to collect closely, what is the real, real uh uh. Findings or real, real new things about that particular topic. Search is to examine closely, carefully, test. Try to probe and investigate, please understand, they are very, very important, this is not the entire. Gamut of explanation of the word search, it includes so many things but I have tried to concise in very little uh word. Examine closely, we call it as scrutiny, examination of a particular issue closely, closely here means mindfully. Carefully, that is carefully means we are not mixing any other issue. We are not distracted by what is obvious distractions that will come in the path of research. We are focused at to the point, sometimes we don't agree as it appears but we try to test it. Try to understand, yes, whether it is correct or factual or finding. Or we will reduce or we will evolve or we will see that it is what we see is the correct thing or what we understand and seeing are the same thing. What we, what we see, if we can understand in the right perspective, then that means the finding become, has become a fact. What you find, that means when you see carefully, you will find something. And if we, if that finding has to become a fact, in fact, many people define research as fact finding. So, fact is not obvious, fact is always embedded, fact is always covered with so many layers. We have to remove those covers, discover cover, remove that cover. So that we try to have a glimpse of the core, that is what is the research is about, so for that. We need to resort to tests, we need to be very careful, we need to try very hard in probing, going deep. And investigate, the word investigate is an activity that generally police people will do. Police people, if a murder has to, has to be investigated. We need to put out who murdered and what, what was the complete meaning of that particular result of the death of a person. Or a, uh, uh, or somebody harming somebody else, so police people do investigations. In fact, that is their job, that is their duty, that is their career, so researcher also is an investigator. So he follows exactly the modes, modes of operandi of a particular inspector or a police person. Who will investigate, see there are two words again you need to remember here, when we say. That investigation is always confirming what we have observed, we get something, we see something. But whether is it that at all, you know, to make it confirmation, we will have to repeatedly do, that is number one. And this confirmation is okay for you, you will understand, but is it same thing for somebody else? Okay, that is called objectivity, what you got, your experience is somebody else, if they do the same steps and same procedure. Will they get the same observation? Yes, they should also get the same observation, so a researcher has a double duty, one is to understand himself or herself. Be very happy about what he or she has found. Then that finding experience should become somebody else's also if they follow that particular path what he have followed. Then, when two people, different people find the same thing, then the finding has become a fact. Please understand, that is the difference between finding and a fact, fact means what? Everybody, if they do the same thing, they get the same experience, that is what is called fact. So, the research, if you want to define, it is fact finding mission, M I S S I O N. Mission me, mission is intense activity to explore a particular thing, intense activity to investigate. See, these appear to be very, very fundamental, I am taking lot of time because many people will not be knowing the depth. Are in the right perspective, so it is extremely important for you to know this. And when once you tune, you tune yourself, your mind and your, you become a kind of what is called pursuer of this, these facts. Then you are initiated into actual research and you will appreciate every step, you will be so satisfied with every step that you follow in research. So, search is examining closely, doing an inquiry. So, let me talk about two, three minutes about what is the meaning of inquiry, I N Q U I R Y. There is another word very close to it and also almost same but little different, let us understand what is. Inquiry, I N Q U Q I R Y, I think you would have to make notes now. So, inquiry, inquiry means question, in means ask yourself. Querying yourself, questioning yourself is inquiry, that's what investigator does. Police people question themselves and then plan an activity, go find out what they have questioned is correct or not. Okay, till that time, they get an answer, they will not, you know, yield, it has, they have to crack the mystery, they have to crack the murder. Right, they have to know, they have to find a solution, there is no alternative. Finding solution is not an optional here, it is an obligation here, it is a duty here. So researcher also will take that up as a finding an answer as an obligation. It is not happening suddenly or by luck, it is by certain course of activities that you will get to know about. That particular event or that particular, you will be able to crack the mystery, so inquiry is always questioning yourself. There is another word called inquiry, you know, E N Q U E R Y, inquire. E N Q U I R G, inquire. Inquiry, you know, may I help you desks that you find in reception or in corporate offices where the receptionist will be there. They will also be kind of people who are, you know, may I help you personally, that means can I help you? That means you are coming for the first time to the building, the building is a complex one, you have lot many floors, lot many people, lot many designations. And what you have in your mind, if you tell me, I will tell you where he or she sits so that you can go and find him. That is also finding, but it ends up in that finding, so if you go to a railway platform, you want to go for Chennai. You have taken the purchase, the ticket Chennai Express and the ticket is there but you do not know about Bangalore with a railway station, you are new to the city yourself. Then you will go to main, may, may help you desk at the inquiry point at railway station and ask. Madam, I have purchased a ticket for Chennai, I have a first class ticket. Can you tell me which platform this Chennai Express stands, you know, that is an inquiry. So that person as a receptionist will tell, no, you can see the train is standing, it is in the first platform itself. The number of coaches, you know, seven, eight, nine are the first class courses, your, yeah, your ticket will be in one of these three coaches. There is a nameplate, notice board, please go and see your name, confirm your seat number, confirm your coach number, go sit and you will comfortably reach Chennai. So, you got a question, you and asked that question because you wanted to reach Chennai, that was your mission, reaching Chennai. By train, so you took the help of inquiry and you got the correct guidance. You went and sat and train automatically went and stopped in Chennai and your job is over, Chennai, you know, you, that was your town. You are new to Bangalore and you know there, you need not inquire there, you know where to go there. So what is important in inquiry is you will get a satisfactory answer and you will be guided. Suitably so that you will reach that satisfaction. But in inquiry, in asking yourself many questions, there will be nothing like satisfaction but there will be kind of what is called solace. Any, every question you put every time, you get an answer and you will get another ten questions, you will get, try to find answers, you will get another ten. So inquiry is something or inquest is something or investigation is something. Which goes on as a continued activity and in the process you get continued satisfaction. Whereas in inquiry, one solution at a time, one question at a time, one satisfaction at a time, one job at a time. Whereas in inquiry, it is a battery volley of questions that you frame yourself, nobody else give you the question. And nobody else will help you, you know, guide will tell you where the answer is available but he will never tell you, he or she will never tell you. You will have to probe in yourself and find an answer, you know, that is the difference between what is inquiry and inquiry. And researcher is always an inquirer, I N Q U I R E R, inquirer. Asking questions, so my dear uh ladies and gentlemen, please understand. Asking question should be your dharma, asking questions to others, asking, asking questions more to yourself. More to yourself, trying to get answer more to yourself, getting help from others will be limited but you will find yourself. So, a researcher is that way, a self-made person, of course, he or she will take some help. But finally, he or she get satisfaction which is so subjective, this is satisfaction is always subjective thing, is it not? So you should be satisfied with what the answer that you get and that satisfaction will go on giving more and more questions, you will be going on. So inquiry gives an eternal satisfaction mode because you will be. Internalizing a very beautiful property or a characteristic of asking question yourself. So, researcher is an investigator whose business is to do inquiry. Asking questions and getting answer and research. The process of this particular inquiry is always systematic way and research methodology is that particular. Area which gives, what is that system made up of, please understand, system is a word. Which is very, very important for you to understand, now what is a system? A system is always hooking up of certain parts, for example, if you say computer system, there is a mouse, there is a key. Keyboard, there is a CPU and there is a screen. This, these are the parts, these are the appendages of a particular system and they are all linked together. Only when they are linked together, although they have their own functions, keyboard cannot make you to help you to see. Screen will not make you to, you know, uh, put, putting keywords. Keyboard is something or screen, screen is something or mouse is something. And the processing unit, central processing unit is something which have their own delineated functions. And all these parts work in tandem, work in unison, work in some kind of process. And a systematic and a process, it is a system and a process. Or a process-driven system is nothing but what is called research methodology. So there is a process, there is a system which we have to understand and all research methodology talks about this only. There is a process for everything, there is a system for everything, system we need to know, analyze analytically understand. Analytically means break down into parts and try to understand each part, for example, breaking down screen. Breaking down keyboard, breaking down CPU, breaking down mouse and trying to understand what each part is about. What does, what is each delineated function of that, trying to understand. And process is always synthetic, synthetic means what, assemble everything and try to get something, some purpose or function out of it. So this synthetic, as first is analytic, as well synthetic process is the real activities that we do in research. We break down certain things, examine the units, gather the information, then assemble and understand the actual function. So, synthesis, analysis are that, modes are the ways of doing the systematic way of doing the. Uh, process, so system, process are two words which you need to understand, we have to understand both in correct perspective. Like what we are observing, what we are understanding the word research itself, right? So what is important here is, it is investigation of a particular area or a question or a topic systematically. Now you know the meaning of system, now you know the meaning of the investigation or inquiry and research if. Is embedding these two words, doing certain searching work, finding certain unknown thing systematically. In a particular cohesive process manner, in a process manner, that is the meaning of research. Now we will try to understand what, what is the aim of this research, as I told you, please understand. The main aim of research is to find out the truth, now truth is a very great word. Truth is a occurrence of many activities like searching, finding, fact getting. And fact getting graduated into truth, so searching is what we can understand easily. Finding is something we, a spin off benefit of searching. Fact is finding becoming little longer time or staying that finding for a long time. In a, a finding stays for a long time, then it becomes a fact. And fact, over a period of time when it is practiced, you know, the, when it is practiced. Then you will see or get a glimpse of what is called truth, many people say truth itself is the God, you know. So, that is the ultimate thing or ultimate game of research, in other words, realization. That means whatever, whatever we are seeing at the face value is not the real value. We have to understand lot of embedded meaning in it so that we get the glimpse of God, that is glimpse of something which is. Imminently present in what we are seeing and that is the philosophy, that is where the doctor of philosophy comes. What you see and what you perceive are totally different, what you see is a materialistic thing. And what you perceive, what you make a meaning out of it is totally a different thing because in between this seeing and perceiving. There is lot of, you know, your personal involvement, your personal purpose, your personal meditation. That is how a finding becomes a truth, so finding becoming truth, find out the truth. Or touch the truth or have a glimpse of truth is the aim of research, is the aim of research. So there are so many things which are becoming clearer now, so whenever see, whenever we see an obvious thing, it may not be true. It may not be correct, it may not be the entire truth, for example, I give a small example which is very obvious for you and you will be started by it. Now if I ask you somebody. Where is your nose, is it in the front of your body or back of your body, what is the answer? Your nose, somebody answer me please.
Sir, front part on the face.
Very good, so our ears, our mouth, our eyes, our face is in the front part, right? Am I correct?
Yes sir, yes sir.
Totally wrong, totally wrong, please understand biologically. Human body is a biological system, is it correct, am I talking right? Human body, human race is animalistic, it's a biological entity, any dispute is there?
No, sir.
No, so human race or men and women are also animals, please understand, that is the truth. Now, if I say, these men and women are mammals, a class of animals. Men and women are mammals, mammals means, you know, a person who has a memory gland. Okay, and this is mammals, we are classed as mammals, right? And the characteristic of mammals is that they have what is called dorsal notocard. Notocard means spine or bennelbo, atav bennu. Spine is in the front, dorsal means front. Now, my dear person who answered that your nose is in front. Nose is not in the front but it is in the back because. You got, your two kalu, man, animal has two hands and two legs, actually they are appendages, they are locomotory organs. They are moving organs, like, for example. Your cows are walking in four legs, is it not, so front arms and back arms, back are called leg, front is called hands. So when you say yourself, then your bennelbo comes in the front. That means that is how you are defined, research says such kind of very, very anomalous, research is always correct. So, when spine is in the front, your nose has got to be in the back, your stomach has got to be in the back only. So what, where is your face, face is always in the back biologically. Your eyes is in the back, tamingala, mammal in the sea, you, you have a big, big shark, big, big. You know, fishes like very, which, which have memories, you know. Whales, whales, whale is a class of mammal but lives in water. Whales, whales, whale is a class of mammal, but lives in water. So, if you see whale, what is, what you see first is this spine, is it not? The nose is down, the mouth is down, the eyes are down, it's in the backside. For an elephant, you see the spine front, your eyes down, your nose down, is it not? See, this is what is actual research. So, what we see may not be true, it may be deceiving. Because man has evolved, he has started walking in two legs, he cannot realize that his face is backwards. The spine is always in the frontwards, right? In actual truth, in actuality. Dorsal notochard means front spine. When the spine becomes front, our nose, our mouth, our stomach, our chest, our, you know, eyes and our ears. Everything goes in the backside. So, realistically, if you do research. Your organs, what you see in the front is not in the front, but it is in the back, alba? Is it clear? Am I understanding? Hello?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That is the truth. So, what we see at the instance, generally we get deceived. And that is why we should follow the path of research to understand the correct perspective. When we have the correct perspective, then the virtual images are always very easy to appreciate. But we have to understand in the hard way what is actual truth, that what is research does. Research gives a correct perspective, research gives a particular perceptual experience. Finding out that particular truth is extremely important. Even though it is mystery and it is little uncommon and unique, research always startles you. You wonder, all myths and mysteries are broken into bare facts, so that you will understand the bare fact. And always it is little different than what we see, right? That is the example that I give. Now, objective of research is, the purpose of research is to discover answers to questions. Through application of scientific procedures, I think we have talked about it, discovering.
No, sir.
No. So, what I'm trying to tell you is, there are so many things which are embedded, there are so many things unseen. There are so many things which are, you know, understood, but we will have to bring out, see and understand. That is where a researcher's activity becomes crucial. He will bring out that particular embedded thing outside. Show it to others that this is not what you see, this is the correct thing what you see. So, bringing out for the perception and for the enjoyment of his own self and others is the actual beauty work of researcher. And that is the objective of the research also. Purpose is to discover, purpose is to take out that layer which is obscuring, which is coming in the way of real actual finding. So, that is the objective. Now, the last one is definition of research is very, very important. You will have to understand each word here, scientific and systematic search. For pertinent information on a specific topic. This is, I can talk about at least three to four hours on each word here, but I know you people by now understood. That each word has lot of embedded meaning. And more you contemplate, more you spend time on that particular word, more information you would obviously naturally get it. So, scientific, systematic, search, scientific means something which you test and realize. Not just nod your head. See, just because some great sage has told, so just because some great people have told. Just because some great people have printed in a great journal, you will not believe it. The scientific thing is, science means, try to test and realize for yourself and then say yes, that is what is called science. Scientific, systematic, this system only we try to understand by the end of this particular coursework, you will understand what is that system. But this is the first step in understanding that system, that is the definition of research, searching. More than that, such, such word search means what? Pertinent information, specific information.
So, can you please change the slide? We are still in the third slide itself, the meaning of research.
Correct, correct, why?
No, no, I thought you have moved on.
No, I have not moved on. I have the third slide only. Don't worry, I will go slow today.
Okay, 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 sir.
But it is very fundamental, it is very important for you to understand, I am going purposely very slow today. Please, please be little more attentive so that you know something, we will deduce little later on. And it will get everything realistic later on. So, it is a systematic search of pertinent information. Here pertinent information is how you select a topic. What is the criteria, what are the elements that you should consider to select a topic? That, because pertinence comes, focus comes, the pointed information on that particular issue comes, that is what is called pertinent information. Very part of information, select information, select topic on a very, very, very. Small area of a topic, topic is a very big word, we will specify the topic also. So, definition of research once again, I will tell you, scientific systematic search for pertinent information. Focused information, related information on a specific topic. Please understand everything, if you do it carefully, you follow this statement carefully. You would do complete justice, you will never digress of your particular. So, what, what the, what do we follow by this? We follow inquiry method, inquiry not asking questions ourselves, investigation technique. So, by investigation, you will find a scientific information on a systematic, by doing a systematic search. You will select a topic and get or collect pertinent information. With that elaborate introduction, let us just understand now, what is the motivation? Why should we do research? Why at all one should be interested in doing research? I will take ten more minutes. Professor Anupama, have I, have I some permission, ten minutes more? She's not there. Okay, I'll just take some time, some ten more minutes to understand. Why should we do at all research and then close the discussion on meaning of research? Some people, like all that we have assembled here, did get a desire to get an additional degree. Which will definitely have greater benefits or greater, you know, kind of what is called responsibilities. So, we have, we will do research. So, that is one, one motivation. Getting a promotion, getting a doctorate degree, getting a good qualified researcher position, you know, that kind of issue. So, we do research for that purpose, not necessarily only for that. Some of you are really concerned over some particular problem, they are bugging, since you were a student. You were in college or even in high school, the problem was, is so much acute, it is becoming more and more. So, you want to crack that problem, understand that problem. So, for that also, research is done, research can be done. To degree and problem, some people, you know, when they do research, you know, they are. Even now, even today in the general parlance, researchers are kept in a respected manner. Why? Because they are the people who don't mind that joy is coming from money, but joy comes from intelligence. By being intelligent, so they get intellectual joy, they want to get themselves ingrained in books. And inquiry and always intense scientific work. So, intellectual joy is their motivation, is their motivation. Some people want to serve society by solving society problems, for example, sanitation, for example. Water treatment, for example, air pollution, solution, they want to serve society in a manner which will, you know. They have a positive interest in solving some societal problem, so they do research. Generally, all the problems, whether it is scientific, engineer, engineering or else. Have final goal to serve society because you are also serving yourself and you are also a part of society. When you serve yourself, you are serving society also in an indirect manner. So, you serve the society, you do research in, understanding Corona disease and trying to put a vaccine. You know, that is a societal problem that you want to solve. So, desire of serving society also is a, is a motivation. And as I told, getting respectability is more a challenging. A more, a hard work than a luck work. You can get positions by luck, you can get promotions by luck, you can get money by luck. But by hard work, if you want, if you earn the respect, that is the path, you get respectability. That is also a point in motivation, motivation. Please understand, this is an important slide. I will end up with this slide. Significance of research, please understand, this is extremely important for us. Who people do not know that research is the basis for everything in life, everything in society. That is a generalized statement, but it is a very true statement, fact statement, you will understand, realize sooner or later. All progress is born of inquiry. So, the habit of inquiry is the best thing for a person to have. Inquiry gives you lot of knowledge. Doubt is often better than overconfidence. Understanding or questioning is much better than becoming overconfident or just understanding superficially, not in-depth understanding. So, doubt is a better option because doubt makes you to be little uncomfortable, little curious. Little anxious to really unravel the truth. For it leads inquiry, it creates lot of questions. And inquiry leads to invention, invention is something for the first time, new finding. So, this is what is, you know, Hudson Maxime has told, very important, very, I am very much moved by this particular statement. Because here, the great meaning of inquiry is been told. The very shallow meaning of overconfidence is discussed. The real meaning of inquiry that is leading to a new creativity invention is also very surface. So, it's a very good statement. All the researcher's qualities are there in that. Researchers should ask question himself, try to be anxious, try to be curious, try to be observant. Try to be doubtful of certain things, obviously that is present, so that questions you will get. And, and when he answers the question, you will find out a new thing, that is what is actual research is about. And research is the basis for not just necessarily human beings and engineers or professionals. But all government policies, that is society binding rules, regulations, acts, laws are a product of research. Please understand, they are the product of research, whether it is economic research, business research, market research. Society problems finding, solution finding, research, this becomes a basis. I am putting this specifically because many people do not know government cannot exist without research. Government policies cannot come out without research. And without government, there is always a chaos, disorderliness. So, research becomes the backbone of everything, not necessarily just the government, but also your life and you are also industry. So, business, industry, government, farming, occupation, anything for that matter. Research is a must, research is a wanted thing. So, research as a tool of economic policy has three distinct phases. Compilation of facts, diagnosis of the real problem, finding out the root cause of the problem. And after finding the solution, how to keep that solution for a long time sustained, that is prognosis. So, investigate, find out the fact, find out the problem, solve the solution. And see the solution remains for a long time, that is the sequence. In, that is how the rules, regulations, guidelines, laws and acts of government are formulated. They are all research-driven. Even in business and markets, research is extremely important, it is a tool to solve many. Operational and planning problems, so not necessarily only research means science and engineering domain. Even in business, even in market, even in literature, even in writing a poem, even in writing a fine art or a drawing. Research is extremely, extremely important and a necessity. That is the significance of research, right? It has lot of nittigrities, lot of units, lot of areas embedded in it. And each one can be inquired into and information can be gathered and new things can be found out. So that even occurrence of bad things can be prevented. Forecast research also is a business thing. You can forecast what bad thing can happen and get geared up now itself, get guarded now itself. So that you know that bad happening does not happen. It is also important for society. As I told you, there is nothing, the not touching society, researcher is also a society member. So, research is equally important for all social scientists. Even I told you artists, even not just necessary for engineers or scientists. Because the problems like unemployment, poverty, social order, personal law, citizen rights, social relationships. So much important. Social relationships is such a becoming. A menace nowadays, even marriage is breaking, the institution of marriage is not there, people are afraid to get married. You know, things are becoming so complex, so research can really throw light upon understanding the problems and finding solutions. And sustaining the solutions for a longer time. So, culture, heritage, social relationships, citizens, everything is embedded in significance of research. Now, I will stop at this today and next time we meet little more. In-depth meaning of what is called method, methodology. And we move on to what is called hypothesis and making a problem statement in the next session. Thank you very much for your patient listening. I hope you have made some fine questions. Please keep the experience yourself. Next time, soon we meet, I will be asking those questions. We start off answering those questions and then start off the next topic.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. I know it is very fundamental, nothing new I told, but it was necessary for me to take off. Next day, one more, we will go faster.
Thank you, sir.
Doctor Bangla, sir?
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning, sir. So, shall I depart, sir?
Yes, yes, sir, I will take one now.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
I'm sure now you have started understanding as to what is this methodology. I'm sure he has given details about that. And I heard of course, in the last five minutes I was there, that's good, okay? Now, let us start with whatever we do. We have, you know, taken up in the previous, you know, say, session. And it is basically fundamentals that we were discussing about. Basically, data and population sample and some measures to understand the sample. And how to use the sample to study the population. There was the basic, you know, say, details that we were discussing in the previous, you know, say, class. Hope, you know, say, those ideas are clear. I did not send you the P P T because I had to add more details. In the P P T, I have done that, I will be sending it today, a part of the presentation. And furthermore, I had shown you the, you know, say, slides where the syllabus. The curriculum for the data analysis and analytics, you know, say, was specified. Had not given the reference, you know, say, books. This time I have also included the reference books. Having said that, don't think the reference books that are given will be used completely. It is not that you have to go through each one of them, you know, in detail. We will be selecting a few topics from these textbooks, okay? I will be sending you the P P T so that you can see as to what are the books that you can refer to. But, yeah, let me go back and show you those, you know, say, details. In fact, now module one, I did not touch, but for explaining as to what is data. And what is a population, what is sample, those are things that I was explaining. The reason being that unless you know some measure to understand. The data and its properties and the characteristics, characteristics, it will be difficult for you to, you know, go through the abstract things. In fact, in the morning today, we will have. In fact, in the morning today, we will have slightly different approach in our session. We will have more of no, simple mathematical, you know, things being discussed. Because you had a lot of discussions as I understand in the first session on research methodology. And I think you know what is research and what is the method, what is methodology? What is, you know, say structured systematic approach to do or carry out research, those are things that you have studied. Here in this session, we will have more of a structured approach to studying the data that you gather or collect or get from some experiment during your research, you know, activity, okay? With this introduction, let me go to the, you know, slide which we were discussing. We were having some statistical formulae for both the population and mean. We will continue with that and you do that when I send the P P T to you, to you, okay? And next important concept is frequency table. Whatever data you have, whatever you acquired from your research experiments, you'll have to represent them in some form. And frequency table is one such form, there could be multiple other forms. But this is one very convenient form, which you say we can be, I can, yeah. Anything to share with me?
No sir, I think Anitha ma'am, you have to mute your audio, it's disturbing.
Oh yeah, please say, don't be in the video mode and also you please mute so that now any noise that comes in will be avoided, okay? Okay, alright. Now, the frequency table that I have shown here, hope you are able to see the slide, right? You are able to see that, right?
Yes sir.
Yeah, good. Here, I had given the example of marks obtained by students, this could be anything. In fact, I have given some examples, number of defects in a program. And they are, how many times the, the different types of defects occur, okay? That could be a table or number of failures of devices from different market outlets. These could be some of the examples, okay? X, X I is the, you know, say marks obtained by students. That's what now we are having here in this particular discussion. Yet mark X one, say forty-five out of hundred is obtained by so many students, say ten students. Then say F one is the frequency of this marks, you know, forty-five. Similarly, marks obtained by students, say somebody has got sixty marks first class. How many students have got, say twenty students out of sixty have got, say, mark sixty. Then we can have F two as the, you know, notation to represent that. So this way, we have got a smaller number of, say, values, each value occurs. F I, say I value, Ith value, say XI, appears F I number of times in the entire data set. You know, I said data set, remember that in the afternoon we will have discussion on the data set as well. So, sometimes you know, the words that we use will be overlapping with the other concepts as well. In fact, I should tell you about data analysis, data analytics. And over and above that, there is something called data science. We will see all those things, those are all bit of abstract things, I thought now, let me first of all explain few things which are more analytical nature. That's what we are having today, okay, in the morning. We have got values of XI which are X one, X two, X three, X N with the frequency F one, F two, F three, et cetera, F N. Now, basically you have got, now say, marks of all students, simply, you know, put in a, you know, piece of paper. Okay, what we do is to identify what are the unique marks, say forty-five. Several students may have got, similarly say sixty, there may be many students who have got sixty and so on. What we do is to write all the unique values in the first column, okay? And how many times each unique value, say X one has appeared in the data set, that's what I am writing, now say F one. Similarly, how many times X two has appeared in the data set, that's what I am writing, F two. And similarly, the last unique value X N appears F N times in the data set. Now, I am sure people who have worked on some amount of, you know, data science, you know, say activity or in machine learning, data set is quite famous, quite, you know, say, important. We will see that later again, you know, say, as to what is data set and how it is so very important, important in data science, okay? So, for us we have got N, small N number of distinct, you know, say, values, X one to X N, which we have bought from an experiment. And they are repeated F I times, F one times, F two times, et cetera, F N times considering X one to X N, okay? This is called frequency table. Very simple, this is called frequency table. And where the distinct values that you have got from the experiment are listed along with their frequency in the data set, okay? It's quite easy to understand. Now, the third column has what is called relative frequency. This is important in that, soon we will, next topic is the service and probability. And some of the measurement of uncertainty that you have got in the experiment, you know, can be dealt with probability. There, a relative frequency will come very handy for you. There's a reason why I am giving relative frequency as well in this particular table. You have got, in the first row, you have got F one divided by N, where capital N, I meant to say, capital N. Capital N is some of all the frequencies, basically some of all data items you had in the data set, okay? F one divided by N, that is the relative frequency of X one. F two divided by N is the relative frequency of X two and it goes on. For the, in a X N value, relative frequency is F N divided by capital N, okay? Capital N is summation of F I. Now, just now see the last, the third column and also the last row. If you sum all these relative frequencies, summation of all of them comes to one. If you want in the notation, sum is equal to summation, F I divided by capital N, I runs from one to small n, okay? If you are mathematically inclined, I did not put that, I will put that in, you know, say, then send you the slide deck, okay? So, you have got, for the given unique value from the data set, you have got the frequency of that being mentioned and also the corresponding relative frequency. Hope this is very clear, it is not difficult as such, you can easily make out as to how data set is being represented using unique data in the data set along with their frequencies. Okay? Hope now say, things you could easily understand, not difficult at all, okay? Now let me go ahead. Now for such a data which is represented in the frequency table, frequency table, how to compute the mean? You have got the other way of summing all the values of X I's with repetitions of course, okay? And summing all of them, dividing by total number of values in the data set, that's what normally we can do. But our data set has been slightly, you know, modified to have unique data values with their frequencies, okay? That's what has been done. So, in such cases, the mean is given by summation of product of XI and FY. Quite simple to understand, see what you are doing here is to multiply X one by F one, X two by F two, et cetera, X N by, multiply X N by F N. Get the product of the elements and the other data in the first and the second, you know, column, okay? And sum all these XI's and FY's, XI FY's, the products, okay? You get a summation of that, divide that by total, you know, number of elements you got, which is in the frequency table, which is a summation FY that I have shown in the previous table, okay? And this what is the mean or average value. It is called, in full form arithmetic mean, it's also called the mean, in short, and also it is called average, okay? Now, we said about basically mean is the central value and all your data values in the data set are, you know, around that value, that's what now I would say, central value is that, okay? All other data will be, you know, spread around that value or mean, okay? Now, in the previous say, class, we were also discussing about how much variation each value is having from central value, that's what we were discussing, okay? And variance is square root, that is now standard deviation or the measure of, you know, say, the variation from the central value, okay? And to obtain a variance, we have got simple formula, which is basically one variant of the earlier one we have seen, which is what, summation, XI minus mean whole square for every value of I into FY, okay? It is very simple, say about this table, you get the mean or average. And now subtract mean from each, you know, say XI. Meaning you get X one minus, X one minus mean, X two minus mean, et cetera, X N minus mean. You can have one more table and then square each one of these differences. Meaning you get XI minus mean whole square, okay? Get this, you know, say, squared, you know, say, differences, then multiply each, you know, say, square difference by corresponding FY. So, XI minus F, minus mean whole square into FY, that's what now say you should get. And sum all this, divide that by summation FY, okay? This is the formula for variance, it's quite simple, not difficult at all. And I am sure many of you have gone through the definition of, you know, say, mean and variance in the, you know, say, degree or in, you know, say, even as I said, elementary classes it is being taught. Okay, but we are revisiting that, however, you should remember that at the graduate level when you study or in research, because we draw a small representative sample from the population, okay, you should be careful, however, whatever formula I have given is, you know, for the population, you should remember that. Now, in this, you know, say, slide, I will also introduce you to cumulative frequency, I mean, you, all these are important in our discussions later on. Then we take up, you know, say, module, module one of course is descriptive nature, module two, module three. Yeah, all this will be very important, okay? Cumulative frequency, basically you are accumulating frequencies, okay? Let's see what it is. Say X one, cumulative frequency is F one itself, X one being the very first value. When you come to X two, what I do is to add F two to F one, okay? Similarly, X three is F one plus F two plus F three. For X three, if you want to compute the cumulative frequency, what do you do? It's frequency you consider and consider the frequency of X two previous value and also consider the value of X one, the very first value. So, sum of the frequencies of X three, then X two and X one will give you the cumulative frequency of X three. Now, coming to the last, we can continue that and in cumulative frequency for X N, you will find sum of the frequencies of all the previous, you know, say, values, X one, X N minus one, plus the value of the frequency of X N itself. So, F one plus F two plus F three, et cetera, plus F N, that is summation of F I for all values of I, I runs from one to small n. So, this is the cumulative frequency of X N, okay? I have given the formula as well, in general, F K, okay? This is the relative frequency of X K, that is equal to summation. You will find sum of the frequencies of S K and all previous values of X, okay? They are being considered. Now, capital F one, the cumulative frequency of X one, the very first value is small F one. And cumulative frequency of the last value that is X N, that is capital F N, that is given by sum of all the frequencies, which is nothing but capital N, as you have seen, okay? So, now you also know, the, you know, another, you know, say, important, you know, measure which will require in the case of frequency table, okay? Let me take some questions if there are any. Is the, you know, idea clear, whatever I have been explaining? Concepts are clear, you have got a data set, okay? Which may be a sample taken from your population, okay? Now, for that data set, whatever you have got, the sample that you have got, which is data set basically, there are lot of repetitions of the data, repetitions we want to avoid so that it will be neat representation. So you will have distinct values being written in the first column, which I call XI's. And how many times each XI gets repeated in the data set or the sample that I am writing in the second column, which I call frequencies. And hence we have got frequency table. Then we went on to discuss about the relative frequency, very important, we will come to that again, okay? Relative frequency. And then we went on to discuss about the cumulative frequency table, basically, that's what we have got. You can call if you want to, you know, say, call by name, it is a cumulative frequency table, okay? This is the fundamentals of studies that we require. There are many others, I am not concerned them, if necessary we will concern them later. But these are all common thing that we will consider whenever you have a sample or whenever you have a, you know, data set for our structured analysis of the data and making some inferences, okay? Now quickly I will come to probability, most of you know, I know why probability is so very important. Probably in our school, up to high school, you may have studied it, just like another mathematic, mathematical topic. But if I had taken that in your undergraduate or post-graduation, you know as to why quality is so very important. You know, nothing is certain, right, in our life. Wherever you go, whatever you do, there is some such amount of uncertainty, some things which are beyond our control, right? Whether it is, you know, say, selling some product in the market, we don't know how many people are coming to buy your product, buy your item. Or if you are conducting some, you know, experiment, okay, chemical or biological experiment. Yeah, there will be some amount of, you know, say, uncertainty, okay? Data that you get will not be known to Uh, data that you get will not be known to you for sure. There is some varie- uh, variation in the data that you get. See, all these are important. So, uh, the uncertainty in life is common thing as you, as you know. Uh, how to deal with the uncertainty? Can you quantify the uncertainty? That's what is the major task, in fact, all our discussions, uh, in a data analysis analytics, we will have lot of, you know, uh, dependence on the probability. Uh, uh, you will see, uh, soon, when we take up, uh, even the, uh, test of hypothesis, uh, which now we need to, uh, you know, say, carry out, okay? Uh, to see whether, uh, the sample that you have taken is sufficient for you to, uh, make, uh, your inference in the population, whatever, the lot of things that we will, uh, see, we will take up them, okay? And, uh, Professor, we came, uh, will bring you up to sampling. Beyond that, uh, I'll be taking, you know, say, in one of the, uh, topics in, uh, module three. Okay? Now, let us now try to quantify the uncertainty that is there, which is prevalent in our day-to-day life, okay? Uh, and if you go to, uh, you know, Singapore junction, uh, which, you know, most of us have passed through, uh, whenever we travel to campus three on the Koodal gate and traffic, no, you can't really predict, okay? Now, uh, such, you know, uncertainty in life, can we quantify that? Do you have a measure? That's what is the study of probability, okay? Mathematically, it is quite intricate, of course, but we will not make it, no, uh, very complicated. Uh, I will tell you about probability and take you to probability distribution. And different distributions are already listed in the, you know, say, uh, syllabus, which is there in the PPT in the beginning, which I am sharing with you, okay? Uh, let us now say have the foundation for that. Uh, to discuss the foundation, I have taken a very simple example. It could be as complex as possible, I tell you. It could be, uh, you know, uh, defects that we are going to, uh, analyze in your program. Or defects in the product that you are marketing, or it could be anything, okay? Uh, however, uh, the experiment I am considering to illustrate as to what probability, how do you quantify that? Uh, or what is the measure of the likelihood of an event to occur? Likelihood of an event to occur, we are quantifying that, that's why it is measured. How do that, let us now see that in, uh, not in great detail, but to some extent, it will be, uh, slightly elaborate, I wish, I would say. The simplest example that I am considering is tossing a coin. Of course, coin should be fair coin, it should not, uh, stand on its edge, you should remember that, okay? Normally in, uh, uh, books on probability and statistics, we will say, uh, fair coin, okay? Tossing a coin, which, when you toss it, it will land with, uh, it's, you know, say, uh, head or tail. Uh, you know, say, which you can see. Or rolling a die. Die, you know, right, six face, you know, say, uh, you know, small, uh, which we use in, you know, say, all, uh, uh, you know, say, plays actually, you know, we also use it in, uh, different places, games, okay? And each, you know, face of the die, uh, is, uh, you know, numbered. Number one to six, six faces are there in a die and, uh, all these in the face are numbered, okay? As I said, uh, the tossing a coin will end up with either head or tail, okay? And such experiments are plenty in our, uh, in, in our own domains. Uh, we will see such, you know, uh, uh, you know, domain-related examples later, okay? Let us discuss this, you know, it's quite simple, not difficult, okay? Whenever you toss a coin, you have got some outcomes, right? You have got some outcomes. Getting head or tail, uh, are the outcomes. Getting, you know, one of the faces, one, two, three, up to six, will be the outcomes, okay? Now, what we do here to quantify, uh, the uncertainty, uh, we collect all possible outcomes in an experiment that we conduct. We call it sample space, okay? In the case of tossing a coin, uh, yes, one, uh, the sample space is generated by yes, one, that is head or tail, okay? And, uh, in the case of rolling a die, it is, uh, yes, two. Set of all the outcomes, it could be one or two or three or four or five or six, okay? Uh, very simple example. Now, tossing a coin, now getting head or tail, you know, suppose that head is very important for me. Getting a head, I can call it a success. In case I end up getting a tail, it is a failure, okay? So, success and failures are important ones, okay? It is like, you know, say, in my program, I, when I run it now once, I get a defect. Okay, getting a defect is a success in my experiment. Actually, it is not success, it is a failure actually of the program. However, uh, the, uh, an event of getting a defect, uh, in my program, uh, that I am considering as a success in my, you know, experiment, okay? Or, uh, uh, yeah, that's sufficient, of course, we will see the other examples later. Okay? Now, what is an event? You know, usually, uh, in a priority is defined, as I said, is a measure of the likelihood of an event to occur. Okay, that event occurs or doesn't occur, that's what is the thing actually, you know, okay? Uh, in case, say, you want to have a success in the case of, you know, say, uh, tossing a coin, uh, success is getting head. I can represent that as a set. A set of, you know, say, elements of a sample, you know, say, space is an event. Say, I, uh, if I get a head, I say, an event, uh, head does, event is head, head has occurred. If, you know, say, tail has, you know, say, appeared, we say, event, uh, tail has occurred. Uh, in the set theoretic approach, what we do is to, uh, you know, say, have event as a, uh, set. A is getting a head, that is now, it is a singleton set, having, meaning, having a single, uh, outcome. Uh, so A is, you know, say, set H and B is set containing only T, okay? And how do you define, you know, say, probability? Quite simple, uh, in the, uh, case of, uh, tossing a coin, you have got only two possible outcomes. And getting a head, uh, is one of the two. That's why, that's how it is defined as, p of A is equal to one by two. Similarly, p of B, probability of, you know, say, uh, event of getting, you know, say, tail is half, one by two. Let us consider second experiment, it's a, hope you are, uh, clear about this, it's a very simple one, not difficult at all. I have, as I said, I have considered very simple example, uh, to, uh, build the theory. Once we build the theory, we can apply to any practical situations, that's what we are going to do, okay? In experiment two, uh, you have got two sets, two events. One event, uh, is of getting, you know, say, uh, an odd number when you roll your die. And, uh, second event B is, uh, the event of getting an even face number. Okay, so in A, you collect all the odd face numbers, in B, you collect all even face numbers. Now, uh, in case, you want to know, what is the likelihood of an, uh, odd number to occur? Odd number to occur. Odd number, occurrence of odd number, uh, or appearance of odd number is an event. That is, you know, say, A, event A, event A has occurred. It could be either face number one or three or five. In either of these, you know, three cases, not either it is, any one of these cases. Probability of A, we call, because we are getting an, uh, odd number. That is, very simple, out of six, three are odd numbers, so p of A is three by six, or it is one by two. Okay, similarly, probability of getting, uh, an even number. Event is getting an even number, okay, probability of that is, again, uh, there are three even numbers. And, uh, we are dividing it by the total number of outcomes, okay? Hope now the example is very simple, uh, any doubt regarding this, quite simple, right? Not difficult at all to understand. Jacinta, any doubt?
No sir.
If something is some math, it will be very easy because they have studied several times. Uh, simple, right?
Yeah, yes.
Very good. I mean, anyway, we will, uh, be leading to slightly complicated things when it comes to, uh, random variables, which of course we will see. Okay, now, probability of the event A in general can be defined with all these definitions, and examples, uh, that is generated by p of A. Normally we use, uh, square bracket, we can use even a quadracket also, but I am using p of, uh, p of the, uh, A, uh, using, you know, uh, square bracket. What is this? Number of elements in, uh, set A. After all, getting an, you know, say, event, uh, is what? Basically represented by a set A, where you have all the outcomes, which are the property of the event given, number of elements in set A. Divided by total number of, uh, elements in, uh, sample space, okay? This also represented by small n of A, okay? That is number elements in A divided by small n, that is number, number of bracket, S S. Number of elements in the sample space, of course, I did not put that, I will put that in, send it to you. So, probability of A, uh, is number of elements in A divided by the total number of elements, uh, in the sample space, in the experiment that you conduct. So, simple exa- uh, simple definition of, you know, uh, probability you have got, okay? This is also called, uh, axiomatic, you know, say, definition of probability, not, don't worry about that. Uh, basically, there is some axioms, we will come to that, okay? Hope my example is clear. See here, properties of, you know, probability, measure, or whatever you co- uh, quantity that you are having for, uh, the, uh, event that has occurred. Probability of an event is always between zero and one. Is there any chance that, you know, say, a probability is, you know, becoming, you know, negative or more than one? Certainly not, because, uh, your subsets, subsets are nothing but events, you know, uh, are always having less number of, you know, say, uh, elements or outcomes in them, when compared to the sample space. In the geometry about sample space, you know, say, uh, whatever number of elements have on sample space or outcomes in sample space. So, you will find that probability of an event not, you know, say, going beyond one. Certainly not, it is a fraction. Furthermore, it can never be, it can never be, uh, negative number, you should remember that. That's how, uh, probability measure is, you know, uh, uh, you know, say, given or defined. Second, you know, say, property. If you have an event with no outcome, what is the probability? Probability is zero. And, these are the two extreme cases, you should remember, equal sign, you know, uh, in the first property, okay? And, uh, probability of the entire sample space. Suppose the event is the sample space itself. One of the numbers has occurred, okay? Uh, now, probability of S is equal to one, because very simple. Uh, in the numerator, you will have, uh, small n, number of elements in S. Diameter also, you will have the same number, uh, yeah, and hence n by n, that is equal to one, okay? And this is a second, you know, say, property. Actually, they are axioms, but I am giving as property for our purpose, okay? Uh, now comes the third important, uh, property. If you have two events, A, um, and one more event B, either A has occurred or event B has occurred. In the set, set theoretic, uh, notations, we will write it, write it as A union B. It is union of A and B, meaning all elements of A and all elements of B occur there. One thing is that, in A, you, you and B, if there is a repetition, we remove the repetition, write only once, which you know from your, uh, set theory knowledge, okay? Probability of A union B is equal to, probability of A plus probability of B, minus, uh, probability of A intersection B. You remember all the formulae and, uh, can anybody explain as to why, probability of A union B is equal to probability of A plus probability of B, minus probability of A intersection B? Yeah, one if you can attempt, it's very simple one, not difficult.
Because it is already there in the probability of A intersection B is repeated in probability of A as well as B, we are going to subtract once.
Ah, right, you know, if A, you know, there are some repetitions, I said. I said you will have to remove them, because when you write in the formula set. However, when you compute probability of A union B, A or B, okay? Which is A union B, uh, in probability of A, when you compute, yes, you know as to what are the formula. Probability of B, you know the formula, but you find there are some, you know, say, uh, in outcomes which are common for A and B quite likely, okay? And those should be removed. There's a reason as to why you need to subtract probability of, probability of, A intersection B, meaning, uh, A intersection B will have all outcomes, which are common for both A, event A and event B, okay? Now, to give an example, uh, let me consider, uh, one more set C, of course, I did not consider here, I should have considered that, uh, I thought, okay? In the past, I can say, say, A is, uh, you consider, uh, the, uh, alright, let me consider the example of, uh, the rolling a, uh, die experiment. Uh, you consider A, which is, uh, the, uh, outcomes which are, uh, odd numbers, one of the odd numbers has occurred, okay? Now, consider one more set C, where C is, uh, the occurrence of the face value, which is, uh, divisible by three. Okay, uh, divisible by three, now what is C, can anybody tell me in this case?
Three and six.
Three and six.
Three and six.
Uh, C, okay, let me, let me come to that, C is equal to, you said, it is an event, of course, okay? C is equal to, uh, that should be a number which is, uh, divisible by, uh, three. What are they, three and somebody said, six, right?
Three and six.
Yes, three and six. Uh, now, A you have already written earlier, uh, A is here in experiment two, of course, one, three, five. And, uh, B, that's all, uh, C has three and six. Now, if you consider probability of an event of getting an odd number, or getting an number which is, uh, divisible by three, okay? That is now, of P of, P of A, uh, intersection, of course, I will go to the symbol and pick that, anyway, I will copy it from here, it is easy. For me, A intersection, uh, C is, is equal to, it should be how much?
One.
Probability of A plus probability of B. Probability of A is one by two, probability of B is, you know, say, uh, again, one by two, it comes to one. Minus probability of A intersection C. What is, uh, uh, the probability of A intersection C? It is two by,
Two by six.
Takes, yes, that is the code, of course, one by three. Six, yes, that is the code of course, one by three. Now if you want to compute P of A union union C. What is this? Probability of A plus probability of C minus a probability of A minus C. How much it comes to?
One, three, five and then six. So four, four by six.
Four by six.
Okay, one by two plus one by two minus
Minus.
If one by six, of course, you can have the common denominator and do that. Uh so it is basically one minus one by, oh sorry, two by six is not, I am not one by six, sorry, two by six. Uh so it is six by six minus two by six and hence it comes to four by six which is equal to two by three. Okay, so you will find uh here that the repeated elements in sets A and C have to be removed when you compute the uh probability of A union B. A or B, event of A or B occurring, okay? Hope this is very clear. These are the three properties, having defined uh probability as a simple measure. Number of elements in the event A divided by uh the number of now, total number of elements in the sample space. If you do that, you have these you know say three properties. You know, what we do in the axiomatic probability theory, we assume these three, one, two, three. And then derive all the other results. That's how it is done. Anyway, this is sufficient for us, for our uh you know, whatever we do in our uh you know course this uh uh you know uh in data uh analysis analytics, okay? Having seen this, hope now the uh definition of probability and the how to compute probability, the properties you know say uh satisfied by probability measure are all very clear, right? Clear or you have got any doubt? It is simple one. Uh if you have doubt, you can ask me, nothing to worry, okay? Now, there is one question, before I come to equally likely outcomes, let us go back. We had a frequency table, right? Frequency table, right? And then we also uh computed relative frequency and put them in the third column. I said, some of all these relative frequencies uh is one. And you will find each relative frequency is a fraction. Right? And each fraction is you know say uh more than zero, equal, it it is not zero of course in this case, it is more than zero. Okay, first property is satisfied, correct? First property is satisfied, uh and uh uh you have seen that uh X N has F N, okay, no, no, there is the cumulative frequency, it is okay. Uh all these can be taken as estimate of the probability with which X one appears in our sample or X one appears in the data set. Similarly, F two by N can be taken as the, you know, estimate of the probability that X two appears in uh the data set and so on. Okay? Uh this is one very important observation, though we do not discuss further in great detail. You should remember that relative frequencies are estimates of uh the probabilities of the distinct values X one to X N in our frequency table. Hope it is, I made very clear. It is a simple idea as such. Okay, one example, uh whatever you have seen earlier, I am not taking here, okay? Now we will come to, you know, all these are important when we take up the uh probability distributions and normal distribution, other distributions, which are very important in uh data analysis, okay? Uh when do you call outcome of an experiment to be equally likely? Okay? Now, what I do uh is to have each outcome in my event. That example we have already seen, you know, uh in in the case of tossing a coin, either head you get or tail you get. So, event of getting head D is represented by uh set A with only H being there. Similarly, event of getting a tail is a probability of now, or sorry, not event, not T, that is now uh represented by uh set B which is a singleton set T. So, what we can do is to have individual uh outcomes or elements of sample space being taken out, have the singleton sets, okay?
Sir, Amit here, can you hear me, sir? Sir, just I wanted to uh tell one
Okay, please go ahead.
Is that in that probability of A union C, while the answer is correct in terms of two by three, uh I think the probability of C is one third, uh one by three and probability of A intersection C is one by six. So, it is one half plus one by three minus one six which is equal to two by three. So, just
Of course, I I have not given you the other way.
No, no, in 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 that deck, you had written that, no sir?
Yeah.
In that, I just uh I just thought I will just point that out.
Uh you think mistake there, Amit?
Ha, it just not mistake in terms of not in the final result, but intermediate, sir, when you said see, probability of A intersection C is actually one by six, not two by six.
Oh, yeah, 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 there was a mistake.
And then, and and therefore, you know, yeah, this is one by six.
Yeah, 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 you are very right, I am sorry.
This is one by six and then then sir, probability of C is one by three. So, one half plus one, three minus one by six.
Correct, you are right.
No, the previous one will be plus one by three.
You are right. In fact, no, uh thanks for observing that. In fact, I should have written uh uh C intersect, sorry. A intersection uh C actually written separately.
Uh C is, no, C is two, is one by three, sir. Probability of C is one by three.
No, this is fine, this is fine, sir. I am coming to that, I am coming to that. It is a board, no, it is very easy, uh anyway, in this, you know, anyway, we will do that. Uh if you consider A intersection C, uh you have only one element, you are very right, uh that is the three, very good. Yeah, now, P intersection uh C is equal one by six and uh and then you have
The probability of C also you should write in that case, sir. P, P of C is equal to two by six, which is equal to one by three.
I I fully agree with, I had a shortcut there, there is a mistake.
No, that's why, sir, it, when you wrote that P A union C, you wrote to half plus half, half, one, one of the halves should be one by three.
Yeah, 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 that's true, that's true, right. Uh that was the, uh that's where the mistake was, but uh uh thanks for uh identifying the mistake, okay?
So, no sir, this is, this should be one by three, sir, not one by six, one by three.
Yeah, 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 correct. Now it comes properly, alright.
No, no, sir, you wrote one by six again, sir, sir, that one should be one by three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Now it is fine, sir. Now it is fine.
Yeah, he, uh so I should have everything in the P P T. I can't do any calculations now uh real time, so there is a lesson learnt, so okay, I think you know, answer is correct, that in fact I worked out separately and uh anyway, this is the correction, sorry uh for the small correction. Uh C you have got and probability of C did not write, actually, it is you know say uh you know, one by, this is a two by uh six and hence it is one by uh three. And A intersection C is uh is you know, set three and uh uh hence in the probability of A intersection C is one by uh six. Now, uh probability of you know say A union C is probability of A plus probability of C minus probability of A intersection C, now that comes you know say properly. Yeah, thanks Amit uh for this you know say valuable, you know, input which is necessary for the correction.
No, that's okay, sir.
Alright, now, uh let us now say go ahead. Uh what I said is that, in all our modeling of the data set, what we assume is that each outcome will have same probability, that's what we will assume. That's how uh the concept of equally likely outcomes. If the probability of event of each outcome is the same, then we define the outcomes to be equally likely outcomes. Okay, that's what the definition is, okay? Now, in the experiments of tossing a coin, fortunately, you have got only two uh outcomes, H and T, and both are equally likely. Naturally, you do not have any reason to say that uh H is more likely to occur, right? And the other way around also is true. So, it is now one by two. Now, uh in experiment two, uh probability of you know say getting face numbered one, uh that probably same as uh probability of getting face number two, etcetera, the last one, uh face numbered six. And each one is a simple one, uh in the event you have got only one element. A set you have got one, one le- and one element in this, singleton sets one, two, three up to six. So, probability of each you know uh outcome is one by six, very simple to understand, not difficult at all, okay? Now, let us go back and check the example that you worked out uh while explaining, okay? See, probability of A intersection C is equal to one by six, because there is one element which is common for both A and C. Alright, uh common for both A and C and hence it was a probability of A intersection C is one by six. Now, in case, uh I consider uh say event D in the second experiment, okay, experiment of rolling a die. Uh the event D is, A is uh getting an odd number. D is uh the set of, is an event of getting uh an even number, an even number. That is a D. Now, in this case, if you consider P of A union B, what will be the answer? Consider A and B themselves, I am not not giving D now. I thought I will give D, but not necessarily. You consider A and B, whatever are given over uh here in the previous example of experiment two. P of A, uh A and B are given here, one, three, five is the uh event A. Uh two, four, six is the uh event you know say, uh B. Now, if you consider these two events, do you have any common you know say outcome in these two events, A and B?
No, sir.
Anyone please, Amit, Amit, of course, you know, do you have any uh common element?
No, sir, no, sir. Yeah, you don't have.
Common element at all. In such cases, uh the the intersection, the common you know say uh set of common elements between A and B is a null set. Null set means uh set having no element, no outcome in it. And we said uh probability of null set is zero. So, for the example uh in experiment two, where you have got events A and B, A is of getting odd number of face values and B is getting, event of getting even numbered face values. There is no common element and hence, in this case, P of A union B is equal to P of A plus P of B minus zero. Okay? Now, one more uh definition follows, which of course I thought I will give it later, but right now, uh I will uh explain that. If two events do not have any common outcome or common element from the sample space and such you know say events are called mutually disjointed events or sets. Mutually disjointed sets. This also is a very important. Uh I am sure many of you remember, whatever your teachers not told you or you have used, maybe that you have used also. Mutual disjointed sets are very important. Uh and in such in cases, if A and B are two mutually disjointed sets, P of A union B is equal to P of A plus P of B. The subtraction uh will have only zero value and hence you get now P of A plus P of B. And in the experiment of rolling a die, uh P of A union B happens to be uh the entire sample space itself and naturally it is uh six by six and hence one, okay? Uh this is you know say in brief about the probability I have introduced, uh using uh two experiments uh that uh tossing a coin and rolling a die. And uh up to disjointed set's outcome, I will, of course, I will have to give that no definition, I will give that. It is there in the next slide, I will bring it over here. And then we will also discuss something about conditional probability, conditional probability. And then move on to define random variables and how these random variables are distributed, that also we will see. That's why the concept of probability distributions, okay? Here, uh I said, I am taking the introduction uh module uh separately because you know a lot of things are involved, some things we have touched upon of course, but uh exact definition of data analysis and analysis are not given, I will give that, okay? And only few things I have said, data set have said. And then comes univariate descriptive statistics and bivariate distributions. So, here is where you have probability distributions and the normal distribution. So, to understand this and then bivariate distribution of course, uh you require lot of you know say uh concepts which you have discussed you say in the class, which now will come very handy uh for you, okay? With this, I think you know say you were listening to uh me and also earlier to Professor B K M for about two hour uh or nearly fifteen, two or fifteen minutes. Let's take a break and in the afternoon, uh let us now say resume the session at two, two or two thirty, what do you say? I am okay with the
Two is okay, sir.
Two or two thirty, either the better, right? Anam Kumar? What time shall we uh resume our session?
Two o'clock is fine, sir.
Yesinta?
Two o'clock is fine, sir.
One of you please.
Two o'clock is fine, sir.
You will, yeah, two p.m., okay, very good, very good. We will resume at you know say uh two o'clock sharp, okay? Thanks. If you have got any doubt, please come back to me, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, two, two, uh four, but if you know say, because it is slightly mathematical, you know, uh concepts. Uh if you know you are uh slightly you know say bored with the you know uh topic that in the afternoon, we will uh probably conclude bit early. Okay, about fifteen minutes you know say, less we will take, okay? Alright, let us meet in the afternoon. Okay, bye.
Thank you, bye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you sir.
Vedan, Vedan, class in what, class two, huh?
So, who's all guy, I mean, you like my balls, I'm just ready, but I say so, there's love.
He's there, okay, bye. Hey. Hello you.
Parandilva. Parandilva.